The meeting to order and we will start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. May please have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move we approve the agenda as superintendent.
Thank you, Burgett. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda passes. That's going to bring us to public participation, which we have none this evening. And with that, I will turn it right over to Sean. Thank you again. Welcome again. And we'll get right into our superintendent search discussion.
It's good to be back with you. Just on behalf of myself and M A S B, let me offer my condolences to you as a board in the Lake Orion community on the passing of Stephen Dracos. He was an amazing person. I have a son who's an attorney in Oakland County. I knew of him. I knew just of his commitment to this community and the long time service to this community. So I'm going to acknowledge that loss that you've all experienced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the work goes on. We've got three things to do tonight. I've got a brief presentation on just this phase of the search process. Won't be long, but just to kind of, we're entering a whole new phase. And I want to make sure as we enter this phase that we have an overview of what's to come, not only tonight, but when we do first round interviews and second round interviews. So I'm going to do that. Then we're going to look at the potential first round interview questions. And then we're going to find out who we want to invite to that first round set of interviews. So let me begin just talking about the interview preparation. Again, purpose of the interview is to learn more about the candidates and how they conduct themselves in a public setting. You will see that some candidates are more practiced and rehearsed in interviews than others. You want to try and listen for the content. However, public speaking and being in an interview like setting is part of the superintendent's job. So how they perform is important. Beyond the first interview, we will have a careful review of the previous experience, thorough reference and fact checking, second interviews, other research. I'd just like to put the interview in the context that it's one piece of the overall process. In terms of preparing, after we identify questions for, and we'll do that tonight. M A S B prepares an interview guide for each board member. We will assign the questions you select to different board members to ask. You conduct the interview. You as a board ask the questions. I'm in the back of the room when it comes to this phase. Those are basically randomly assigned based upon the questions you give us. There's a guide that basically encourages you to listen, to make notes, to rate the answers as they're given. And to then place on the guide to say, you know, what would the follow up be to this question? So there'd be a guide that you do. It's basically one question per page, allows a format for you to take notes. And you'll get copies of that electronically in advance of the interviews. We'll have hard copies for you the night of the interview. So you'll have some interview guide. Give some thought about what you want to hear in terms of response to the questions. And no one practice the question you'll be asking. Figure out which question is being asked before you so that the interview can flow well. We also like to warn board members about what we call cultural noise, just overly positive or general responses, which are the socially acceptable thing to say. Responses that lack substance and evidence, and we encourage a redirection to the facts and experiences. That's nice. But can you tell us where you've done that in your past experience? Encourage the board to be attentive during interviews, you know, nod, pause, just, you know, be natural, make sure you're engaged. Listening responses during interview should not be overly supportive. I once had a board member after a certain candidate's response was like, that's what I was looking for. He's my guy. Needless to say, that disrupted the flow of the rest of the evening, not to mention the overall interview process. You want to be engaged. You want to make sure you're interacting, but there is a part of this process that involves that poker face. And making sure that you're giving that feedback, but not in a way that would suggest to anybody watching that there's decisions being made without hearing about everybody. Encourage people to go into the interview with an open mind, listen objectively. Don't, don't rush to break a silence. Frankly, some of the best candidates will pause after the question's been asked to gather their thoughts. Allow them silence. Don't be afraid of it. And again, try not to overly validate any one candidate's responses. Again, more fundamentals. Make notes. The notes you take as a part of this process are subject to FOIA. That's just a heads up. Don't make any notes that you wouldn't want to have printed in the local paper because the notes you take during the interview process are subject to FOIA. Listen for facts and actual events. We encourage people to think about the STAR protocol. You'll see that many of the questions that we're suggesting be asked are questions that ask for evidence and experience. It's easy for candidates to talk abstractly. If you've read the right books, you can give the right answers. You want to hear them describe a situation, how they've responded, the actions they took and the results that were achieved. After the interview, we're going to take a second to note question you have for future interviews. Little bit of logistics in the first round of interviews. Our goal is to create like circumstances. We try and set up an apples to apple situation. So we'll identify 14 to 16 questions that will be the questions we ask all the candidates we bring in for first round interviews. After each interview, we'll ask the audience for feedback. I'm going to be working with Julie because it's, we need a couple of support people for interviews. Just give you the heads up. We'll need somebody to act as a greeter as candidates come in and hold them in the green room, which I assume will be the conference room behind us. We'll need somebody who, I will collect feedback forms from the audience in between interviews. I will hand those to somebody and I'll ask them to make seven copies because my understanding is we'll have, be back to a full board for the interviews. I'll ask them to make seven copies. And before you debrief the interview, we will give you copies of the audience feedback. So you have a chance to look at what the audience heard as well as to process what you heard. Then we'll ask you to debrief the interview. We'll go through each candidate that you interview in the first round and I'll have two questions for you. What did you like? What did you hear that excites you about this candidate? What did you hear that was positive? The second question I ask is, what are your wonderings? What, what questions do you have about their candidacy now that you've heard them? I scribble furiously. I'll do that for all the candidates we bring in for the first round interview. After we finish interviewing all the first round candidates, and we'll, we'll have that conversation about all of them. Once we've had that conversation about all of the first round interviews, then we'll talk about what do we want to do next? Did you hear some candidates you think would be worthy of inviting back for a second round? If so, who are those candidates you want to see, hear from again? And we'll try and get, I will push you to bring back no more than two finalists for the second round. Sometimes boards are very reluctant to cut anybody, but I, you know, I will try and push you to win it down to two candidates for the second round. What I will do for the second round in terms of developing questions with you, you will have, when we go through questions in a minute, you're going to say, oh, I want to make sure we asked that one, but could we ask it in the second round? Typically, I come out of this process of question identification for the first round with a handful that the board has said, let's not use that for the first round. Let's save it for the second round. So we'll have those and those will be common to both candidates we bring back. But when we did that debriefing of all the first round candidates and I asked you what your wonderings were, I will have been scribbling like mad. And I will generate candidate specific questions based upon your feedback from the first round interview. So when we come to the second round, some of the questions will be the same for both candidates, but some of them will be, well, we heard this in the first round, could you elaborate? Or, you know, how do you address this situation, given the background that you've had? That isn't exactly like the job you'll be doing or that we'd be hiring you to do if you're a superintendent. So that's a difference between the first and the second rounds. The other thing that's going to be different in the second round is, in the first round, I'm going to ask you to state of the script, ask the questions. Don't ask for a lot of clarification. Just let them answer the questions. In the second round, I'm going to encourage you to pause and see if you have a follow up or any of your fellow board members have a follow up after each question. When we get through with all of our planned questions in the second round, I'll look at the board and say, board members, do you have any additional questions? I will also have passed out little quarter page sheets to the audience and see if they have any questions that have not been asked. When I do that, I always let the audience know that we may not get to their questions based upon time. And I also let them know that I will screen their questions, just to make sure they're appropriate. Sometimes an audience member has come in late and the candidate's already been asked the question and answered it. So I'll do that screening of questions, just to make sure we stand the right side of legal in terms of what we're asking. So that's kind of the difference between the first and second round. I do in both rounds tell candidates, you know, their board will be asking you 15 questions. You, there's 50 minutes allotted for the interview. That's approximately three minutes per response. Make sure you're monitoring your time. And I will encourage the person who has like question seven and question 12, just to say, this is question 12. So the person has that signal in terms of where we are in the process. So, but, you know, again, part of the reason is people who are going to be a superintendent should be cognizant of how they manage time and how they're able to respond succinctly, but thoroughly. And basically I will bring the candidate into the room and that's the board president's job to manage the proceedings. It's familiar. You did this four years ago, but it's a little different because I know you used M L I. I've got a good friend, a couple of good friends who work for M L I. We compare notes a lot. It's the same, but not identical. So any, any questions about the process and what we're preparing for?
It's also in person this time, which is a big difference.
Yes, that's a little.
Which is a big difference for us.
Oh, yeah, there's Zoom.
Yes, yeah, as opposed to all on Zoom.
Thank you. So just for clarification, we won't ask follow up questions during the first round.
Correct.
So when it's happening, it's very clean cut. Everyone gets the same. Got it. And then she had Danielle's facilitating all of that, those pieces as they're happening. You're just there kind of in the background.
I have a flag in my back pocket in case I need to pull it out.
Okay, perfect. Let me develop the second round question. So when will we develop the second round? Tonight with whatever's left over or?
Some of the questions will be your leftovers.
Okay.
And I don't want to say leftovers. Some of them you look at and you say, if we answered this, ask this one from this category in round one, this would be a good one to, and I make note of that.
And we would discuss that like while we're doing, like after the discussion of the first interviews?
Yeah, well, and
Because we won't meet again.
When we debrief each candidate, one of the questions I'll ask you is you've just heard from,
Okay.
You've just heard from Mr. Smith. What did you like about Mr. Smith? What are your wonderings? What would you want to ask? And we'll do that for all the first round candidates. And then I'll have those notes for the candidates we decide to bring back.
Okay, thank you.
The debriefing is all in open because any deliberation has to be done because you are deliberating as a board at that point. And that's a requirement that it be done in open session. I facilitate in a way that encourages you to talk about the positives of candidates. And on the questioning, there's a way to ask questions. You have candidates with enough positives so that we can stack up positives and make that the differentiator in a, in a way that's appropriate and typically goes well in a public deliberation.
So this is just putting this out there. So if I recall correctly, we're going to be doing like the second round of interviews over two evenings, correct? Is that kind of the?
We've got two evenings set up.
Okay.
Typically, I've done the final interviews back to back, just to give people that back to back feel. And how a final round typically works is candidates come into the district in the afternoon. I would look for a couple of board members to volunteer. Usually it's two pairs of board members to take candidates on a tour. Oftentimes with an administrator, just to go along. It's a little different in the summer. You know, touring schools is like going to the boatyard in the winter or the marina in the winter.
That's true.
But, you know, it's still a chance to get an idea of the breadth of the district, the facilities. Also a chance just to be driving around and seeing the community. Because, you know, sometimes people have an idea of a community and you get out driving a little bit and it looks different. So it's a chance to kind of have that education. I also tell board members too, when you're coming to a second interview, sometimes it's not just about the candidate selling themselves to the board. Sometimes there's a job for the board to sell themselves to the candidate. To make sure they're going to say yes, should, should they be selected. So that usually happens for a couple hours in the afternoon. What we also do is decide where to put each of the two candidates. And we have a community open house and we invite the community to come and meet the candidates. Engage in, we usually set it up for an hour of conversation. Again, it's a little different because it's the summer. We'll probably, we'd probably do that in this building and just use this room and the nice conference room. We usually do it side by side for the convenience of community members so that they can, you know, one stop shop and talk to one candidate, talk to the other. We invite people to fill out feedback forms when they're done with that. Encourage board members, if they want to observe that, to do so, but to hang in the back because you had a chance to interact. But it's a good opportunity to see, it's a different setting, you know? Doing this is one type of interaction. Standing and interacting with a parent, a grandparent, a business owner, one on one is a different interaction. So it's an opportunity to see how they do in that type of setting. So what I, typically what I recommend is community tours from two to four. Open houses from somewhere in that four to six window. First interview, six to 7:30. Second interview, 7:30 till nine and nine o'clock. I encourage decision making on the day of the second interview. It's about perception and open meetings. When boards suddenly take a long adjournment after the second interview and a half hour later come back and decide, it's not a good look. I've seen that happen. Or when you do the second round interview and come back three days later to decide, it just leaves open the possibility of people getting the impression that you've decided outside of an open meeting. So I encourage boards, meet candidates for that second round and make a decision.
More specifically for the first round of interviews that are going to be coming up here in July-ish. If those are going to occur over a couple of days. Actually, this is a conversation Juliana had about potentially not having it broadcast on, on TV. Because if someone's interviewing, two people are interviewing Wednesday and two people are interviewing Thursday. If those Thursday candidates would actually, you know, once again, we would hope, right? They would be honest, but it would actually give them an advantage. So have, you know, as in your experience, you know, obviously we do have quite a lot of technological capabilities here, but just to keep the playing field level. You know, but then eventually broadcast, putting them on our website or whatever we, you know, after the interviews. So the community can be involved and see those, but it's just to level the playing field a little bit.
I've had boards tape the first round because they're over two days, not do them live broadcast.
Correct.
And then put them up so they can, by then you've winnowed it down to two. And people can be efficient and watch the first round interviews for your two finalists.
Correct, so.
That's what I recommend.
Okay.
I've been in situations where they've said, no, we want to do it all live. My experience has been candidates that, candidates that watch and then prepare usually do not do well interviewing because they've over prepared and their, their answers are flat and not at all dynamic. So, and you, you, I mean, let us.
We're laughing because we, we experienced that last time. It was over Zoom.
Over Zoom. It was totally evident that she had watched, yeah.
But one of the candidates, and we should avoid gender specific pronouns tonight as to not give away identities, but one of the candidates last time we believed.
That was four years ago.
Yeah. Well, and I, I've, so you know, it's kind of a,
That's true.
I, I think it's the fairest way to do it is what we're suggesting is we record them and then broadcast after.
After, just into, like I said, I mean, just level the playing field. So there can be no question of.
Because technically they could come.
Technically, they could come. Exactly. If you, if you wanted to sit in the crowd on the, if you're a second, I mean, granted, that's probably going to hurt your chances of being, becoming a finalist. But the other side, I liked what your point was. It makes it efficient for the community too, that say, if they want to come here and see them all live, it's open, it's transparent. But if they want to start forming their opinion between the two finalists, because the other side in representative government, we do. we do get to choose who the finalists are.
Correct.
They, they can have, then
You know, and, and in the, in the press release we'll craft announcing the finalists, it's easy to say, you know, all interviews from the first round can be viewed at
Correct.
And, you know, our two finalists are, and this is how you watch, their interviews specifically.
Got it. Okay. Gee, I just kinda wanted to get your thoughts on that piece of it.
And typically, between first and second round, um, I, we do a little scrubbing of personal information from resumes and letters of application, but then we will post those to your website as well. So, uh, the community can see, here's the resume and letter submitted along with our two finalists' applications.
Excellent. Um, okay, anything else on that topic?
These are great questions. I wanna make sure you're comfortable with the process and kinda understand where we will roll.
Mm-hmm.
Are we good with it?
Looks like it.
Okay, then I'm gonna turn this off for a minute, and we're gonna move to kind of the bank of questions. And I gave you that question bank, and I tried to go through and suggest numbers of questions per category. Um, it's not perfect. Um, you had more instructional question, you, you, your profile is weighted a little more heavily towards instructional leadership, but there are some general leadership questions that I think get at more of what the instructional leadership qualities were that I was hearing, um, in the focus groups. So we'll, we'll just go through. Um, they won't necessarily appear in this order. I think it's bad form if the first question you ask a candidate is about board relations. Um, that just happens to be the first category on this form. Um, we'll put them in an order that makes sense. Typically, we start with a, a community engagement question or an instructional question. Um, so don't, don't worry that the first category is, like I said, that is, that is bad form if the first thing you ask is, how are you gonna get along with us? So, board relations, of those three options, is there one that you think would be a preferred question to ask?
And just as a reminder, obviously, we're only using numbers, right? We don't wanna read out questions or anything at the, right, so, um, I know, it's tempting to do so.
Do you want us just to all yell out the numbers?
Just, I
Somebody feels the strongest offering an opinion.
I think three is
Number three.
I agree.
The strongest.
Okay. So let's use that as a round one interview question. Um, is there one in that category you'd want for round two?
Is it possible, actually, I think if, if we're missing something, that we could create some additional questions? Cause I think there's a, maybe a example-based question that might fit better in there?
Mm-hmm. And, and what I do too is, um, anything like that that you wanna email me?
Okay.
Then, then I've got it, so we don't have to do it in a way that
Correct, I don't wanna do it live right now, but I think I could email you a couple examples of
Mm-hmm.
I do like question one, because it just, it, it, that, the way we go about having that relationship that's covered in question one, is very, is, is there, how dynamic are they, or how fixed are they? Yeah.
I mean, I think number two is out altogether for
Yeah, I didn't like, I was not a fan of question two either.
No, I agree though, I also
Yeah, of the, of the three here, one and three were the
Yeah.
Yes.
Consensus.
There we go.
So we'll make sure we use, I heard three for the first round and one for the second round, but also look for if there are things you, that aren't on the list that you think should be added, we can tweak them.
Very good.
So, the next category is finance and facilities. I suggested three, just knowing that you're in the midst of a bond, you've got facilities, you've got questions about that. Um, are there questions on that that you particularly like? There's nine, they go over to the next page.
I like three.
I agree.
I, I do like eight as well. Yeah, Jake and I are aligned on the same theme. Eight.
Yes.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm. So three and eight are probably my top two as well.
Mm-hmm.
So three and eight, definitely.
And, and five never, never goes away. It's always something that
Five's critical.
It's out there.
But, and, and five is one that I always tell boards, you've gotta ask that either in the first or second. I think in this community, you need to ask it in the first round.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
And I was almost thinking we could combine eight and nine a little too, make it a two-part question, a little bit.
Nine is for that role, I, in a, in a district our size, that's not something that
I agree.
they're necessarily intimately involved in. If they, if they go too deep into that, that becomes a
True, an assistant
We're a seven thousand student, eight, eight hundred employee district and you're in the weeds.
And you got Andrea to figure a lot of that out.
Right, exactly.
Mm-hmm. So those three for the first round, anything in that section that you think, make sure we get this in the second round?
I don't think we're, are we differentiating right now, first and second round? We're just telling you out of the group, our favorites.
Okay.
I mean, we, we kind of did for the first one, because for board relations, we did say, um, you know, question three, we would like to see in the first round, but question one could be a second round question.
Two is a difficult question, and I mean, we haven't experienced that as much lately, but that's something that in this line of work, it's always around the corner, that that's something they might be facing in the role.
And in the second round, we can ask more than one question out of each area.
Oh, yeah.
So, because I do think five's gotta be
Yeah, we said five would be a first round interview question.
Three, five, eight, first round.
Yeah.
But we're only in first round going to ask one.
No, cause in, uh, when it says finances and facilities, next to it, it says three questions, that's kind of just based on, um,
Grabbing three of that.
Community feedback and whatnot, stakeholder input, what the community, you know, kinda drove that. So, we can ask multiple questions, right, from each, um,
Yeah.
Right, but I'm just looking at the total number of questions out of all of those categories. We're not gonna be able to do first round interviews in twenty minutes then.
No, we're not, that was never, that was for
That's board members.
That's board members, this is an hour process.
They get, they get, they get fifty minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we have ten-minute debrief.
Going on.
Correct. So, no.
Seven questions.
Yeah, board members will ask six questions probably.
Yeah.
And then they have twenty minutes.
We're interviewing, you were doing multiple interviews.
Yeah, we're, we're having multiple
This interview process, I anticipate fourteen to sixteen questions to be answered in a fifteen-minute block of time.
Okay, perfect.
You know, I would suggest you look at one or two, cause those are the questions dealing with finances, and you've picked three that really, three is a, a community and partnership, but you don't have a budget process, budget development question identified, so I look at one or two.
That's why I said, two, two was a tough question to ask in the second round. I, I, I like that, because it, it, it require, you know, you did the role, that, that's, that's a
Tough question.
How you, how you handle difficult circumstances is, is a key.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So answer, ask question two, save that for the second round.
Two and two, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, cause at that point, that's when you're digging in deeper with the person.
Okay, so in that category, you've got three, five, and eight for first round. Number two for the second round. Any others in that category you'd want in second round? Again, we'll have other questions for the second round that are candidate-specific.
Right.
And I, I think that's exact, is if we had these questions available, that after you hear from a person in the first round, one of these might jump off the page and say, I really wanna ask candidate, the fourth candidate, that question, yeah.
Yep. So communications and community relations, I've got eight there. Again, it's a high priority, but I, I put some of that in the leadership questions at the end.
I liked question two.
Mm-hmm.
And four and eight.
Two, four, and eight you liked? What about three?
I know, I like those too.
I liked six.
So we just like all the questions.
But I, but I will say is I liked two. Yeah, two jumped out.
I like two as well.
Two jumped out at me.
Two, I agree.
I'm, I'm definitely doing two for the first round then.
There you go.
Okay.
And then you said four and eight as well?
Yeah, but then where did we go from? You had six?
I think six is a good challenger, cause it's gonna make them not feel comfortable.
Mm-hmm.
That, that was my question.
Whenever you're talking about a challenging situation, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there consensus to ask six?
I mean, I, I, I agree with six, so.
Six in round one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six and two?
Throw a bit of a, throw a difficult, throw a difficult one in round one, see how they, see how they deal with it.
Mm-hmm. So I've got two and six for round one. Any of those you wanna make sure don't get left behind and just say right now, let's make sure we ask this in round two?
I, I, I did like four as well, to your point. I don't wanna give too much, but that covers a
Covers another segment.
Demographic.
Mm-hmm.
So let's make sure we do number four in round two.
Yeah. It's a bit of a curveball, cause you don't think of that when you're
And, and, you know, frankly, eight came out of, uh, some work I've done in districts where they've had very challenging title nine issues that have dragged on and have been very controversial. Um, and they were looking to see if somebody was suited to address those moving forward.
I think we, 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 a couple of us threw out eight as well.
Okay, and, and that's, that's a tougher one for the second round.
Mm-hmm.
So let's, I've got two and six for the first round, four and eight as possible for the second round.
Sure.
Sure. Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Then instructional leader, again, this, there's more of these that hit in the general leadership at the end, but there's ten questions, um, just suggested. So in this next category, including the one on the next page, are there ones that grab you?
Ten is interesting, just in the time we're in. I think that was the intent of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
I would expand it a little.
I really like five, because when you're moving up in the organization
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
You, you have to do things differently when you have the big chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree on five as well.
I'll just point to seven or, and eight and say, one of those, you need to make sure you ask one of those questions, cause that is a
That, that hit me, because that was in our candidate profile as well, about, about
I like eight.
I would choose eight as well, of those two. I would choose eight as well.
Yeah, I like eight.
Again, I, I just, there is a
Thank you for the guidance, cause you're right, if you don't ask certain things
Why did we put it in our profile?
Exactly.
Or you, you, you've missed, you've missed something that's always there.
Well, and, and there's also a constituent group for whom that is the question that must be asked.
Certainly.
And you don't want to not ask it.
Yes.
So I got five, eight, and ten, others there that, um,
What about nine?
Nine.
Yeah, I saw that one as well. I
I think that's a good one for the second round.
I think so as well.
Like, that's a, that's a good
I like nine as well.
Yeah.
Before we hire you, hit, hit them with that one.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Because it really asks them to get into
Details.
Detail.
Mm-hmm.
So we've got five, eight, and ten, nine is a potential second round. Get anything else you wanna make sure that doesn't get left behind? Going, going. Which brings us to, to, oh.
I think we do a good job with six, so I'm not sure, but we would wanna continue to do
Yeah, I saw, I like six, six jumped out at me a little bit as well.
Now, six and nine will give you similar responses.
Right.
Good point.
Yeah, of the two, I would choose nine then, right, so.
Nine asks for a little more precision
Right.
In terms of
No, yeah, that's a great point. They are very similar, it's probably why it stuck out, cause they were so similar.
So human resources, again, there's five, it, it goes over to page five, there's eleven possible questions. Um, in smaller districts where there is no human resource manager, um, this tends to be more important, or in districts where there seems to be significant morale issues, um, this is more important, that's why I, I didn't, you know, suggest as many in this category.
Mm-hmm. For this one, I like five, personally.
Are they similar to
It's probably similar. Is it? Okay.
As far as
Yeah, true, actually, of the two, I would, you know, I would choose seven, because it's a little bit more
Specific.
Yes, a little bit more detail would be involved in answering that.
Yes.
But that, that vein, I like that whole vein going in that direction.
I like the specifics of two or ten. It's, it, they're similar questions.
Yes.
But I wanna know, do they have experience in that area? Because that is, that is a major, you know
And I, I think eleven is playing onto ten as well, it's almost like, I think that's what they meant by that.
Yeah, the only thing I worry is about that, is you could, it could be
Not applied to ten.
Not applied to the topic matter of two or ten.
Right.
I'm wondering if we could add a portion of eleven to ten. Um, it would be the fourth word of eleven.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I like
The only thing is, you, we're getting a little more, too specific there, because in the first round, I, and, just to say, in the first round, you might have someone who's like, oh, well, I really, you know, that's the advanced question.
I've never done that.
I was thinking for the second round, sorry.
In the first round, I would want to know, do they have any exposure to that? Because before I go to the, if you, I don't wanna find out in the second round that nobody has any exposure to two or ten.
Right, so I was thinking, sorry, I was talking about second round, more detailed.
Yeah, so
So I would modify ten for the second round and
But I, but I really wanna get one of those out in the first round.
Yes.
So, and it might not be, we could go back, what we could do is table eleven and say, maybe we come back to that type of question, because the way they answer this one would likely lead you to ask eleven in the second round. Okay, so you gave me an overview.
Yep.
Now tell me
Some specifics.
Some specifics when it, when it got to a certain situation.
Yeah, I just think that fourth word is really key for that topic.
For the second round, I would think, but for the first round, I would just want a generic overview of where they're at.
So two would be great for round one.
Or we could use ten and then just rework eleven to be a little bit more detailed about the subject matter of ten.
But I'm with you, but the two jumped out at me for a first round that says, just lay it out there at the highest level.
Say, okay.
Tell me, tell me what, tell me where you're at.
So I've got two and seven for the first round.
Correct, so far.
And then maybe a hybrid of ten and eleven for the second
Hybrid, something, depending upon
Depending on how, but that's where you're gonna say, what do you wanna hear more about? And that question is a big one that could lead us to wanna hear more, depending on how they answer it in the first round.
Is four, anything in, in that one as well? I know it's something from a strategic plan perspective for us.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Put that, put table four for the second round, possibly, I mean, it, cause some of those, it's hard to decide whether you wanna ask that.
Mm-hmm.
Cause if they covered it, then I don't need to ask, but if they haven't covered it, then you wanna ask it.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't wanna lose four.
Yeah, I like four.
So, sometimes you get, you get your answer to four by how they answer seven.
Sure.
Um, because they talk about the importance of
Four.
Of doing that, but it, given where we are in terms of the pool that we're looking at when we're talking about human resources and hiring, uh, four is something to be asked, I think. Um, again, if you don't get the answer from how they answer, uh, number seven, right? Okay, wait a sec, I just, we're doing two and seven.
Yeah.
Two and seven in the first
We're confusing ourselves.
Two and seven in the first round, right?
Correct.
And for the second round, maybe four and maybe ten with a borrowed word or two from a lot.
From eleven, correct.
Okay. Let's look at, uh, last category. And again, there are 14 possibilities here. Because in, in this district, in this size district, this is a key.
Right. Just on first glance for me, number five, stock out.
Yeah, that's a great one.
Yeah.
Six seems like a horrible question to ask because they might have, the majority, the major, the majority of them are going back to that job.
It's the best place ever.
That is, that is borrowed from a list of top 10 interview questions. When I look at that.
That aren't done in a public forum?
In this setting, it may not be so good.
I've been asked that in a, in a, you know, private sector interview in a room where that's not being filmed.
We might review that from the bank of potential questions.
Yeah.
I think seven because that piece we've done so much work on in the past couple of years that.
And that's something that our, that we would, I think we would all expect our leader to.
Absolutely.
100%.
To be engaged with.
I like nine, but not necessarily for first round, just because given our pool of candidates.
I like, I, I, I sort of like it for the first round because again, it's all about presenting the vision of.
The future.
How have they done what they've done in the past? How are they going to do what they're going to do in the future? And that sort of ties both those elements together.
The one, one I heard definitely for the first round so far are seven. And I've heard favorable things about five, favorable things about nine, but no real excitement yet.
How about 11?
I like that.
Yeah.
It's more of a character question.
Might be a good first round is what I was thinking.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I liked eight.
For a first round?
I like it.
Yes.
Yeah, I like it.
I mean, that's, that's a big role of a person that. If they, do they understand the importance of that role and how do they communicate it? So I think you, I think that's a good question because you could learn a lot from a person by the way they answer that.
So I've got seven, eight, and 11 for the first round.
And five.
And five.
Did we say five?
I have.
Five was when we started.
Five.
There just wasn't a lot of agreement when I said five.
I liked it.
I liked it as well, yes.
It's fine, it doesn't make me sad.
I've got five, seven, eight, and 11. Anything there that you say we got to make sure we address this in the second round? If we get serious about somebody, we got to know how they do this.
Nine.
I would say nine for sure.
Because.
Yeah, I agree.
That's when they're getting real close to having to do a lot of that.
Okay. And then when it comes to the closing, I usually suggest, um, yeah, the, the second option for the closing is the one we used in the first round.
Okay.
Because frankly, oh, don't, don't really care about what questions they might have if they're not going to be back with us.
The other side of that is how would we go about answering? Because you have seven individuals, none of us that speak for the entire board. So that's a difficult, a, a difficult thing to ask, whereas the other one is, hey, we asked you 15 questions.
Do you have any closing things you'd like to leave out?
Yes, what else, what else lies in the universe?
Bergen, you had a, you wanted to go back?
It was just a clarification.
I didn't, I was unclear on which was which for leadership questions. It just kind of flew through. I didn't get any input.
I think I do.
And then it was done, done.
Before I take this home to process it, I'm going back to page one and just saying.
Okay, I appreciate that he's going to miss rhythm.
For the first category.
Just given today, I feel like we didn't get a lot on two and three in leadership. It doesn't need to be those questions, but.
Let me go back. I really like two.
The concept of two and three, we could formulate it differently, but it's.
Are you feeling that for first or second round?
Second.
Okay, yeah, I would agree with that.
And, you know, for, for me, two is about local, when you've had to be the point person. And three is more about engagement professionally and often county and statewide. It's, it's, they're, they're somewhat different, but they're both important to know.
And yet it would be interesting to hear their interpretation on two with their answer that.
It would also be interesting to see their interpretation of three.
Correct.
Because some, some people may think that's a big part of their job and other people may say, well, why would I be involved in that?
Right. So two and three, I've got noted for second round.
Thank you. Correct.
Sorry, thank you, sorry. Now, do you want to go back and go from page one and go all the way through it again?
Just the first category. I have us choosing question three for the first round.
Yes.
Question one for the second round.
Correct.
Correct.
Second category, I've got us choosing three, five, and eight for the first round. And two for the second round.
That's what I have as well.
So far, we're aligned.
Yes.
For the third category, I've got two, six for the first round and four and eight for the second round.
Correct.
Okay. For the fourth category, this is why I do this. I've got five, eight, and 10 for the first round.
Yes.
Yep.
And nine for the second round.
Yes.
Correct.
For category five, I've got two, seven for the first round, four and 10 for the second round.
Borrowing from 11.
Fourth word from 11.
Correct.
Right?
Fourth word from 11.
Okay. And then for the last category, I've got five, seven, and eight, and 11.
Yes.
And then for the second round, possibly two, three, and nine.
Yes.
Correct.
That's.
I, I'm, I'm amazed we were 100% aligned, but we were, there was a lot of numbers.
There was a lot.
He's on top of his game over there.
My little hiccup was I didn't make, I, I try and use consistent notations for myself on that one category where I had it, but we're okay.
I used the square and the round method.
Me too.
So the square was round two and the circle was round one.
That's exactly what I did, Scott, no joke. That's exactly what I did.
I did the circle and first and then no circle and second.
I have a couple lines here.
Oh my goodness, how funny.
So we're ready to move on now to talk about the people to whom such questions will be addressed.
Can we take like three minutes?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Can we have a three minute break? Does anyone mind? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Three minute break.
We're now at the point where we're going to try and figure out if we can come to a consensus around the group of candidates we want to invite for interviews. This is different than you did it previously. I'm alive's practice is to bring you binders with all the information about candidates to go through them that night and then have you decide. Plus of theirs is they have a legal interpretation saying you do that in closed session. Downside of theirs is really the first time you see the material is literally the night you're making decisions. Our process is different. We give you access to all the materials ahead of time. I got some questions from some of you, so I want to just flesh out, based upon the questions I got, a little bit more information about some of the candidates because those questions came to me. Let me just go down the list and say, candidate 21, I had a question about can you help us better understand what that role is? That title appears to be a title that is not at a very high level in our organization. In the district this person is from, that person is a member of the cabinet. They are the person who is in charge of all teaching, learning, assessment in that district, technology, state and federal programs. They do the administrative team agendas. They do the professional development for administrators. They do not evaluate principals. That is assigned to somebody else who's a member of the cabinet. So again, different districts have things organized differently, but that's a little bit more background on candidate 21. Candidate 55, let me just double check. Candidate 55, it is a much smaller district. Enrollment is about one-fifth of your enrollment. Principals report to the superintendent is who evaluates, all the principals is the superintendent. Candidate 55 is new to that role. There is no direct supervision or evaluation of principals in the role that that candidate held previously. And in terms of a cabinet in a district that size, the cabinet is basically the administrator, the principals in the district kind of function, and they all basically take different roles. Again, having worked in a district that size, the pluses, you know everything from buses to food service to accounting to human resources because there's nobody else doing it. So that's, that's a little more background on that candidate. Had a question about candidate 65. Again, um, evaluates all the directors, early childhood, information, technology, school improvement, grants, instructional coaches, and is a partner in principal evaluations, though they do not sign them. There's another person who signs the principal evaluations. But in terms of developing goals, having check-ins, doing visits with principals, coaching them, even developing IDPs where necessary. Candidate 65 does all that, but just organizationally, it's another member of the cabinet who is actually signing off and has final say on evaluations. Let's see, three, some questions about candidate 14. Just trying to figure out on their resume, they had some history over on the west side of the state. That candidate's role previous basically was with a private school of which there were five constituent schools. Total enrollment between the five schools was about 2,400 students. Also collaborated with public school districts in that same region. So there was a, a component, there's some public districts listed on their resume, and that was kind of a collaboration and support as they worked together on some elements of curriculum development. And then I had somebody ask, if you dug into the weeds and read all the application questions, candidate 103 had an answer on a couple of questions that was a head scratcher. That is a common way that those questions are misread. The information, there's nothing alarming. But there's a, a misread that can happen on how the question is phrased.
So it was just a misunderstanding?
It was, it's a misread. And just, just so you know, once you get candidates, and I have a list coming out tonight, in addition to contacting them, making sure they accept the interview, getting them scheduled. And just so you know, how I schedule candidates to interview is when I talk to candidates tonight, I tell them tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, you will get an email. The email will have a link to signup genius, pick your slot. I do that to avoid any appearance of bias in how they're scheduled. They schedule themselves because, and I've, I've had people tell me, this slot's the best slot. This slot's the best slot. I don't know if there's anything to that, but to avoid any appearance of bias, I just, I tell them all, look for an email at 9:00 AM and it's, they all get blind copied on the same email, so I know that they're all getting the same opportunity to schedule themselves. So that's how that works. The other thing that will happen, um, once I have the names from you, the numbers from you, and I go match them to the names and they say yes to interview, is MASP also use a, uses a contract service, a third-party service to do another layer of background checking. And so, you know, before they come to interview with you, there'll be that additional layer of, of digging. And I'll also say that because we're picking candidates tonight, we'll have them publicly announced tomorrow. It'd be like three weeks before we interview them. It is open source vetting. People see the names, people dig, in a way that is, I do pretty good, but I'm amazed sometimes. My request is, should any of that, any information that is of concern surface, please direct that information to me, contact me, and I will dig it down. Typically, it's a call to the candidate saying, you know, this is what board member X has heard. A member of the community where you, you know, contacted, helped me understand this, helped me put context on it. So that, that's just some of what's ahead. What are your, any general thoughts on the pool of candidates? Any, any questions that I can try and answer for you before I ask you to tell me? I, I will basically pull the board, and I've already warned Danielle, one of the beauties of being president is I will start with her.
Just go straight down the line.
Up to five. And then, then we see, but before I do that, is there. And then, then we see, but before I do that, is there any, just in general, that you had questions about or thoughts about you thought would be good to share with each other?
Any questions or thoughts before we just share our initial, right, candidate selections, I guess?
And basically, what I'll do is I'll pull the whole board. Sometimes when I do that, you've all coalesced, and there's a very clear line of, here's the core that we should bring back to interview. Sometimes there's, you know, two people who say this, sometimes there's outliers, and then we have more conversation about, gosh, we should really bring that. Sometimes people say, yeah, I was the only one who voted, and that was just a reach.
Right.
So, ready to just poll, poll, so I do the poll.
Okay, let's do the poll. So like you said, I get to go first. I had four candidates, so number 30.
Okay.
Number 3. Number 65. And number 21.
Okay.
All right.
I also had 4. 30. 65. 85. And 21.
Okay. You know what? I'm just gonna skip, and we'll go right, if you're ready, Susan.
Sure. I had, I had 5, and it's all of the same that they said. So 21, 85, 3, 65, and 30.
Okay. And, very good?
Don't forget your mic.
I selected 21. I selected 65. I selected 30. And I selected 85. Those are my 4.
Okay. And Scott?
30.
Wait a second. Okay.
3. 65. And 21.
And Jake?
I selected, I had 3 that stood out. 30. 3. And 65.
Okay, so, let me just, for my own.
Same.
So there's...
So 30 and 60.
And that was my number 4, so that's, I'm fine with 21.
60.
So 4, you had 21.
You also had 21, Jake?
21 would've been my 4th.
Okay.
So, the ones that he highlighted is darn well near unanimous. That would've been my 4th, if I was forced to select a 4th.
So the, the question I have is, I say 4 to 6 to interview. 85 and 3, both have support. You know, if we do it strictly in order, 3 would be the next, and then 85. I, I do encourage us to get at least to a 4th, because again, there is, I talked to all the candidates, they tell me, yes, yes, they're in, they're gonna, but it's, it's never a sure thing, once I call them.
I'm actually fine with all 5 that had any support at all, from my perspective.
Sure.
'Cause we're so close between 4 and 5, to me.
Well, technically 21 and Jake would be 6, but yeah.
Well, 21's coming back.
Right.
So those are the top 3.
Yeah.
So the question is, 85, I'm not interested, I mean, if you got, if we decide to see 85, but I'm, I'm not interested in seeing 85. I've seen 85 before in multiple forums, and I'm just not interested.
So, my point was a little different. Sorry, I'm not sure I was clear. There were 5 candidates that got any support from anybody on the board.
Got it.
And so to me, all 5 that got any support, we could bring back.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Susan.
Sorry. Because no, out of all the candidates we had, there are 5 that got some support from someone. So whether we bring back 4 or 5.
That's a pretty good narrow.
That's, so instead of cutting it, let's just look at all the...
We, we can invite all 5, and that is not unreasonable. It makes a long first night. Basically, we'd do 6, 7, and 8. We'd be done debriefing by 9:40, 'cause sometimes, and I'll be honest, sometimes, you've all been in positions where you've hired people, and sometimes it's a polite debrief, like it's, okay, we, we...
Next, yeah.
But, and so, I, you know, I'm comfortable with inviting all 5.
And as you said, they may not all accept your invitation, but I think since we're so close in numbers, as I see it, we have spanning from 3 to, to 6 on all of those 5?
I, we have the 2 sixes, so all of us agreed on 60, it looks like 65 and 30, we were...
We have 30 and then 21.
Yeah, I mean, you could throw me on 21 as well, because it's in my top 4. If we're gonna bring 4 back, or 5, then 21 is...
Right, so those 3 candidates, we were...
21 was my, my 4th, so...
100% unanimous, pretty much with, and then that, just like you said, leaves the question of...
The other 2, and they're so close.
85 and 3.
I would just say bring them both.
I've got no problem with planning for 5. I, I can tell you, just given the background and current role of 3, I think it would be iffy for him to say yes, at this point. Just, there's a big risk for him.
And it makes me sad, 'cause I know him, and he's great, but, yeah.
I hope you can convince him.
Well...
That person.
That person. That, that person, my job will be to...
They, they will, they will listen to you, I'm sure.
That, they listened to me so far, that's why they're, that, why you see them. But there's also, given, given current situation, there's just a, you read his resume, you probably understand that.
Yep. We got you.
Yeah.
There's interesting circumstances that certain candidates face.
Certainly.
Exactly.
It, it's a timing thing.
Yeah.
Right.
So is that typically, so like when you see something like, where it's like, you're going 4 to 6, we already have 5, that's typically what districts do then? We don't deliberate at all and decide to go down?
No, there, there's, in this case, I don't think there's...
We don't do that now.
There's not a need to. You'll learn more about them over the next 3 weeks and in the interview. Hopefully, you'll see all 5, and, and that's the point at which, and it's, it's amazing once you talk to them. I, typically, once we get to this point, their consensus begins to roll, is what I've, I've discovered. And, you know, you, you talk to each other, yeah, I'm comfortable with setting up for 5.
Perfect.
If you all are, 'cause they, they all had 6.
Does everybody, does everyone?
Is everyone okay?
Is okay with setting up with all 5?
Absolutely, I think it's awesome.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
When you think about that, you had 6 adults looking at 19 people, and we could agree on 5, that's pretty cool.
Right, that's pretty impressive, actually.
And that's really my point of why, let's cut, why cut 1 out?
100%.
Right.
Those were the only 5 that all got a vote?
Right. Right, on some capacity, and that's awesome.
And I, I, I'm remiss that we did not thank you, Sean, 'cause you did a great job in organizing this for us, and helping point us in the right direction, based on the, the process so far, so thank you for that, it really helped.
Well, and, and the goal is, I think I said last time, process is important, and moving through, and making sure, and I'll, you know, I will tell you that each step of the way, I will do check-ins with you. I will check in after the first round interviews and say, do we need second round interviews? Are there, both in terms of, are your minds set, have you coalesced, or do I need more candidates, 'cause we get out of the first round, and you say, yeah, none of these are gonna work? So, you know, I always try and make sure that we don't lock ourselves in, and we, we...
Keep moving.
Keep moving.
Keep moving forward, right?
Keep moving forward.
That's all you can do.
Let me just double-check, I've got 17th and 18th as interview dates.
Master Calendar, yes.
And are people comfortable with, can, can we start a meeting at what time?
I don't synchronize the calendars on those 2 days, like everybody's synchronized.
Which days?
The 7, July 17th and July 18th.
We set, we set the calendar, hopefully everybody blocked off those evenings.
Julie blocked them for us.
The evenings are, but the question was if we could start earlier, right?
Right.
Just what time?
18th I would prefer earlier, we have people coming from out of town, but I pretty much told them, guess what?
So Sean, are you thinking, the 17th would be 3, 2, so...
I was thinking we'd do 3 on the 17th, 2 on the 18th.
Okay, so just because we would have a, I mean, we could start earlier on both those nights, I'm just, you know, obviously, um...
I can...
I'm free after 4.
I'm available on most days, so...
On my, on my Julie holds, I also have the 16th. So does it, are we just saying it's the 17th and 18th, is that what?
Yep, 'cause I didn't get that Julie hold.
Ah.
Well, it was, I believe it was initially, because we initially had the 17th as our regular board meeting.
Right.
So we held the 16th and the 18th, but we've since moved our, and I know, I remember in the, in a previous meeting, you said you prefer not to have a gap of, of time between those 2 nights, so...
That explains the Wednesday, but I just was saying, we could either go Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday.
Oh, I understand.
And it doesn't sound like Sean's available on Tuesday.
And that's fine, I mean...
I am now teaching superintendent evaluation on Tuesday.
Ooh, okay. So the 17th and 18th, so what time would people, just if you wanna say, I'm available after 4, or whatever?
Wanna start at 5?
On the 17th?
And the 18th.
I can do 5.
I can also do 5.
I can, it sounds like everybody can do 5 on both days.
Susan says she could?
Did you say that? I'm sorry.
I mean, those days are bad for me, no matter what.
Yeah, I know.
But, it's okay, I'm gonna make it work.
Okay, so, but this 5 o'clock, is 5 o'clock open?
She'd go earlier.
I've, I've got this, I'm just, I wanna make sure I offer interview slots at 5, 6, and 7 on the 17th.
Okay.
And at 5 and 6 on the 18th.
I like it.
And then that would give us time on the 18th, obviously, for deliberations and...
To deliberations and get you home by...
Okay. Sometime.
A reasonable time. The, the other thing I wanna recommend is that the meeting start time, if people can do this, be posted as 4:55 each of those nights, so that the...
Interview takes...
So they're ready to go at 5.
So that first interview is a 5.
Is at 5, yeah.
Yep.
That makes sense, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, they get their full, now, when you talked about the debrief, so, they go for 50 minutes, do we hold all of that in our comments until after all the interviews for the night are done? We don't debrief?
We don't debrief in the 10 minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's just, that's just, get a drink of water, get ready for the next person.
What usually can happen in that 10 minutes is I can get the papers collected, hand them off, they can get copied. After the second interview, we can distribute the feedback from the first interview.
Okay.
After the third interview, we can distribute the feedback from the second interview, so that, you know...
Then a little pause after the 3rd to get the feedback on the 3rd, and then we're ready to go.
Give you a chance to read it all, and then we debrief all 3.
So you had said earlier in the meeting that you were gonna ask us after every interview, so what did you think? And I think that's maybe the interpretation of...
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Each night, we'll debrief the interviews from that night.
At the end, after the last candidate has interviewed?
After the last candidate.
Oh, got it, okay.
Debrief, not deliberate.
Right.
Difference.
Debrief. We'll, we'll say, the first night, we'll simply say, what did you like? What are your questions? And we'll stop it there. Second night, we'll see the last 2, I'll say, what did you like? What are your questions? After we do that, then I typically say, in general, do people have comments about the 5 candidates you've seen? And that's when, that's the invitation for somebody to say, you know, I really liked Mr. Jones and Ms. Smith. And I encourage people to have conversation. I know sometimes the process is to move you right to a motion, but I encourage people to have the conversation, to share perspectives on what you've seen, and then see if that conversation moves you towards a motion. Does that, I, it's probably not 100% Robert's rules, but I, I kinda fold it under interview debriefing, to have that time to talk about them and hear people's impression, 'cause sometimes people hear things and see things, and when it's brought to your attention, you go, oh yeah, that really was good. I didn't hear it that way, and now that you pointed out, I need, yeah, it, it changes one's perception of candidate sometimes. So I, I try and have boards do that, before moving to a motion, to say, you know, let's make a motion to bring back Mr. Smith and Ms. Jones.
Right. Perfect. Any other questions as far as moving forward, the process? Anything else at this point? Oh, you gotta switch out his mic. Okay. And thank you again, Sean, I know you take a lot of phone calls, I'm sure, from us. I appreciate you being so available and willing to, you know, take the time to talk with us, and...
And let me say, it's a little unusual, we have this larger gap between names being out and the first round interview, which could mean it's more likely, you get more community input, which is good, you know? But, again, if something comes to you that is, you know, alarming, please, please contact me, because, you know, part of my job is to chase that down for you. Again, I don't think it will, but again, I, I'm not on every social media platform, and I guarantee you that you will have people looking at these names who are on every social media platform.
I'm sure. Correct, yes, that is correct, I'm sure. Okay, any, any other questions or comments before we move to our action item? Okay, looks like we are ready to make the motions. So may I please have a motion for the selection of candidates for first round interviews?
I move to approve the following applicants to be invited for first round interviews for the superintendent position. Number 21, number 85, number 3, number 65, and number 6.
No?
No.
Number 30.
Oh, 30. How did I get 6? I'm sorry. I was almost so right.
6 was the number, maybe at the end.
Oh, yeah, you're saying the line number, maybe.
So I'll reread those.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you could just reread that one more time.
Numbers 21, 85, 3, 65, and 30.
Thank you, Scott. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Susan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, so we will have those individuals hopefully with us in a couple weeks. So, obviously, as far as recap next steps goes, Sean will work on contacting everybody tonight, is that your goal, is to contact them this evening to let them know?
Hopefully, I will contact them and have a, my goal will be to be done with this by 9:00 p.m.
I love it. And then, as you already mentioned, the signup genius will go out tomorrow at some point to, so they can schedule their own times, and then Mark is gonna take care of all the communications tonight, once he gets the go-ahead from Sean of, or tomorrow, I'm sorry, tomorrow, once, yep, okay, oh, perfect, thank you, so...
But Sean, would you let us know if everybody, if anybody says no, or?
Yeah.
Or let Danielle know?
Yep, yep, if you could just let me know, and then I can send out quick texts or whatnot, that would be helpful, just so we're all on the same page of who will be joining us. Did I miss anything? Recap next steps, Julie, did I miss anything?
I'll just clean up those calendar dates, cancel the 16th and the 19th.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay?
One quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm hoping that we have both nights needed, but if 1 night is only needed, are we sticking with the 17th or 18th? Is there a preference amongst the board, 1 night better?
Oh, that's a good que, that's a good point, if for some reason, some 2 candidates decide not to move forward with the interview.
It'd be best on Wednesday, 'cause it's...
That's usually our...
But Susan, whatever you need, 'cause like...
Thursday would be best for me, if I end up with just 3.
That's fine with me, I'd be fine with Thursday.
Okay.
But that's also bad for Jake, because that's his family's coming into town.
That's, that's, that's fine. If, if we only have three candidates, then...
Are you okay with Thursday?
Yeah, if we, it would be five, six, it would be...
I'm hoping we need both nights.
Five, six, and seven.
But if for some reason we did not, the preference would be Thursday.
Even with three, just because it's long, I might recommend two, one, and deliberate, just to make it more manageable. Three, three in a night's doable, but...
The addition of the deliberation and discussion.
And just, sorry, one more point of clarification. If one of the candidates does decide to drop, we would do two and two then, two Wednesday night, two Thursday night, and that would make the most sense for us. Okay, perfect.
Because you'll know that before you put the time slots out.
Correct. Okay.
I, I'm fine with that, Sean. If that's your professional recommendation, two and one, I'm fine. I'll make that work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other recap next steps, anyone? Okay.
The, the other thing on the calendar is we do have two dates reserved for second round interviews, the 30th and 31st. Again, looking ahead to there, I would anticipate two candidates coming back and us only needing one of those.
Okay.
So, we can talk about that in three weeks, but just, you know, as you're looking at your calendars.
Got it.
If there's a preference now, of which would be better, we, we can look at that if it, if it's helpful.
That might depend on the candidate availability too, especially if they're committing after tours and opening houses and all.
And things of that, well, yeah, I, I suppose that's something, once we whittle it down, maybe we can cross that bridge, depending upon...
Cross that bridge. I can also tell you, I'm, I'm somebody who says, you want the job? This is...
There's an aspect to that, yes.
There's an aspect to that, then.
Right. We can, you know, once we...
Look at them.
We can look at it once, but just keep it on your radar that after the first round, if we're only gonna...